All right, we have all council members here, so I will go ahead and call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Let us all take a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any questions? Councilmember Clark, here. Reed, here. Jackson, here. Lawler, here. Lanell, here. Williamson, here. And Mayor Sanders, here. So I have a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to amend the agenda for the item P. No. Yes, wait. So. Correctly, I move to amend the agenda to include the approval of resolution and then item P and simultaneously suspend the council rule that prohibits that from being voted on.
Well, I would do those separately. Do it to him. You would make a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment to include approval of the resolution. Come back and give another motion.
Okay. I move to amend the agenda to include the approval of resolution 2021-30. Support.
Any questions? Councilmember Clark, yes. Reed, yes. Jackson, yes. Lawler, yes. Lanell, yes. Williamson, yes. And Mayor Sanders, yes.
I also move to suspend the council rule that prohibits the individual ad discussion item.
So just for purposes of clarity, what you're, what you're, the rule you're asking to suspend is you're asking to suspend the rule that mandates that a discussion that an item added to the agenda appears before and stays prior to the need to be only for discussion. Support.
Councilmember Clark, yes. Reed, yes. Jackson, yes. Lawler, yes. Lanell, yes. Williamson, yes. And Mayor Sanders, yes. I make a motion to remove line item I. Support, support. Any questions? Councilmember Clark, yes. Reed, yes. Jackson, yes. Lawler, yes. Lanell, yes. Williamson, yes. And Mayor Sanders, yes. So I have a motion to approve of the agenda of the amended items.
Same thing.
The fourth. Any questions? Councilmember Clark, yes. Reed, yes. Jackson, yes. Lawler, yes. Lanell, yes. Williamson, yes. And Mayor Sanders, yes. So we don't have any presentation or recognition stuff. We're going to have a public hearing. We'll have to do the public comments. So at this time, anybody in the gathering can stand and address. Anything that's on your agenda. We don't have reason for closed session. With your motion to approve of the consent calendar items, the July 29 special meeting meetings, August 2nd regular session meetings, August 9th special meeting minutes, August 16th regular session minutes, August 24th special session minutes, approve of the permit for alcohol in public places for the kids and stuff museum event this Saturday, and approve the permit for alcohol in public spaces for the Green Foundation, but their event next Friday with 17. Also, council meetings minutes in July.
Yeah, closer just.
I move with the amendment for item five on 24 special session meetings. Items four and 17, the location for me was out of the county when I connected using last, so it was not an obvious.
Any other questions? Any questions? Oh, yes. Support. Councilmember Clark, yes. Jackson, yes. Lawler, yes. Lanell, yes. Williamson, yes. Clark. And Mayor Sanders, yes. In your board packet, we have the application for William Arnold, who is applying for the community tax course. So I have a motion to approve.
Same thing.
The fourth. Special agenda.
Mayor, I need you in the separate because you've got to call my friends on your table.
Okay. Okay. I'm sorry. I thought we were getting a couple. And then also the board application for Jay Lewis, she sit on the zoning board of appeals. So for both applications, here I have a motion to approve. Support, support. Questions, I got it? Any questions? Councilmember Jackson, yes. Lawler, yes. Lanell, yes. Williamson, yes. Clark, yes. Reed, yes. And Mayor Sanders, yes. I have a motion to approve the Michigan Hispanic Development Corporation grant agreement. Support. Mayor Sanders, yes.
Thank you, Mayor. So this grant agreement, just to remind council that we put in for a grant with any sort of technical assistance to assist us with updating our current, coming in some master plans, some decisions from the table agreement, school and post-grad hours. Do you have any questions for our city manager?
Any questions? Councilmember Lawler, yes. Lanell, yes. Williamson, yes. Clark, yes. Reed, yes. Jackson, yes. And Mayor Sanders, yes.
So I have a motion to approve the Beckett and Raider agreement.
Same thing.
Support. Okay. Just as a follow-up for this, Beckett and Raider, they will be the consulting partners, will be assisting us with that updating process. So this is just the formal agreement that we gave before with that process.
Any questions for city manager? Any questions? Councilmember Lanell, yes. Williamson, yes. Clark, yes. Reed, yes. Jackson, yes. Lawler, yes. And Mayor Sanders, yes.
So I have a motion to approve the first reading of our ordinance 2021-07, do you want to enter chapter 22, article six? But I haven't.
Same thing.
Yes. So as the council's aware, there's been some back and forth regarding the adult use marijuana. Originally, there were 20 licenses. The council subsequently modified. At council's direction, we changed direction a little bit, and we're setting this up in a different way. So we made amendments to several sections of the ordinance. Probably the two most, the two most significant changes are as follows. One, the number of licenses available for adult use facilities for growing and processing only is now going to be uncapped. So there's an unlimited number of licenses available to those. However, those licenses or those facilities will only be allowed to operate within an overlay district, excuse me, overlay districts that are going to be established through planning commission and this council that will be contained within the existing M1 and M2 districts. As of right now, the overlay districts surround the existing approved facilities that either have a medical permit or an adult use license. And so in effect, while you're not putting a cap on the number of licenses, you're limiting the number of facilities that there can be by virtue of geography. I do have just a rough sketch of what the intended overlay district will look like. It's a little bit jagged, but you get the idea. The other thing that has been changed in the existing ordinance is previously under state law, you had to have both a medical license or a license to operate on the medical side as well as in order to get an adult use license. And because of that, when we did the adult use, when we set up the adult use ordinance, we didn't put in basically an evaluation process because it was the same as the medical because you had to comply with A and it didn't make sense to be differentiated for B. Since that's no longer the case at the state level, we put in an evaluation process that's virtually identical to the evaluation process that we have on the medical side. So that's been added. As far as an effective date, we've set the effective date to be November 20. Obviously, you have a first reading now, second reading September 20. Usually, the effective date would be October 20. However, it's will allow the zoning ordinance for the overlay districts to get the planning and the council will set the effective date out to allow the zoning to catch up. Are there any questions?
City, quick, come here.
Wait, hold on.
Yeah.
I don't have a question actually.
Yes.
Okay, I just, just because I know I'm going to be the one, I think, one of the novos. Unless I just want to explain that, and that is, I just completely disagree with continuing to limit business legalized in Michigan. And I've spoken with members of my precinct, and this is in their eyes and mine as well, not a good idea to limit growing and processing in LBS. And so I'm going to respect the agreement with you all, but I just needed to say that because I represent a lot of people who think this is not a good idea.
Any other comments? Can you hear me? Councilmember Williamson, no. Clark, yes. Reed, yes. Jackson, yes. Lawler, yes. Lanell, yes. And Mayor Sanders, yes. Discussion approved of the first reading of ordinance 2021-08, the ordinance for men, chapter 22, do not add article five.
Need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Support.
Okay, so this is the existing medical ordinance that we also modify such that it's going to have identical overlay districts that we have in the adult use side. So it will only be permitted within those two overlay districts within the existing M1 and M2 zoned areas of the state. So that's the industrial park. We have not modified the number of licenses available. It stays at 20 for medical. The reason for that is really, I don't think you're going to see anybody applying for medical anymore. Medical's kind of being phased out at the state level because of the adult use. So I would be surprised if we even see anybody renewing them anymore. It's a very limited market. Realistically, it only serves the population that's under 21 in Michigan, which is just a very small percentage. That's the most significant change that we made to this. We made slight change to the definitions and in the overlay district definition. We've. Nothing really else of any significant substance was changed. All the distances remain the same from schools and parks and things like that. Again, we've made the effective date November 20 to allow the zoning to take effect before this ordinance comes into effect. But the overlay districts will be identical.
Questions, I got it? Let's proceed.
Yes. Mayor Sanders, I want to thank attorney attorneys for all the work that you've done to work with our community at this time and further iterate in terms of the community's call for us to have more business and this being one of the options that we are working with what we inherited. And so as we move forward, that's, that's, this is the process we're working with what we have. And I just wanted to make that clear that policies change. And so that I appreciate our attorney for working with us at this critical time to address the need as it stands today.
Any other questions, candidates? Any questions? Councilmember Clark, yes. Reed, yes. Jackson, yes. Lawler, yes. Lanell, yes. Williamson, no. And Mayor Sanders, yes.
So I motion to approve the equitable community engagement service RFP.
Same thing. Support.
Mayor. Just, just wanted to remind everybody, we've released our request for proposals from qualified consultants to assist us with equitable community engagement services that the posting deadline was Wednesday, August 18. We received one proposal that was from EHI Consultants. They are out of Louisville, Kentucky. Record checks are currently being conducted on the firm. We have contacted five references that they have provided. I have not received a response back yet. With that, I don't want to make a formal recommendation to report with the firm that I have not received record checks on back on. So I would just ask or recommend that we release, re-release the RFP to hopefully gather more interested firms who are looking to assist us with that. It does not have to be as long as we did the original posting, which I knew was a month. So we could do it for just an additional few weeks to see if we attract any other firms. But until I have received that information back from all of the references, I assume that the firm will bring in Florida, an official recommendation to report with that. Yes, continuing.
So I'm kind of just, so we are literally 20 minutes from one of the largest foundations in the world, and that'll be the Kala Foundation that has about a 20-year history of DEI work in communities. And so I'm just wondering if we might be able to do a reach out to, I can help provide context. I know there are community members who have great contacts with the Kala Foundation. They are experts in this work and could provide us with a number of people. I think that we should hopefully have a couple of options to choose from. So if you're okay with that, I can get you those contacts. I know some other numbers that we can, but they, they have been in this for years and they've been involved in DEI and communities. So I hope that you would be able to do that as well.
So do you need us to take any action on that?
Just kind of looking for a direction, I guess, on what she would like for me to do. Whether I just wait till I receive all of the references and come back with a formal recommendation on the firm that we did receive the proposal from? Or would you like for me to re-release the RFP to see if you can gather a few more proposals?
I. Yeah, councilwoman.
Thank you, Mayor Sanders. I, in, in looking over and thinking about, because I know I initiated this, and I really appreciate Mayor Sanders' work to, to get it out, and councilmember Williamson's recommendation just now, looking at all of the work that the city administration will have to do for the confidence and planning process and things that we're discussing later in the agenda related to engagement amongst us and in our creepsings. My thought process was either to tamble this until we're, you know, further down the road with some of the work that we're already having to deal with in a short deadline or, you know, otherwise revisit it. I don't know what that process looks like on your end. But I think that there's a lot of engagement already required right now. And I've also received feedback that we're spending a lot of resources on these and not to be repetitive. So I would want to tamble this for now.
Well, we, did anyone, that don't get the promotion.
Oh.
So we actually, it was just that we could just laugh enough to get that item, but we all believe that that's how you want it.
I agree. The third, the wave of part reservation application for the Albean area, fill in the draft. So, support. So we have the application in that board packet. That's you on that, please. Check. Okay, I got it all. And I will say, I would, I feel they should be able to have that without charge to call someone, and they put in part. And so it will give them the opportunity to see what they have. First, I have the new name place for places in the park where people donate money. And I'd like for them to see that too, so like, I'd like to have and be able to use. Yeah, I want you to support, correct? Any other questions, candidates? Any questions? Councilmember Jackson, yes. Lawler, yes. Lanell, yes. Williamson, yes. Clark, yes. Reed, yes. And Mayor Sanders, yes. Discussion approved of all that motion of the approval for a council retreat. Same thing. Support. Councilwoman, do you want to take the lead on this?
Sure, yeah. So I, I mentioned it after the special, the special meeting that was had because I think that was maybe the most clear time for me where I felt like something that had been mentioned really needed to follow through on in a formal way. I'm realizing that more and more. So I, there's two things included in here. The first one was something that was generally brought up, and I just wanted to make sure it was in writing for all of us because it hadn't been included previously. And then the second page, 151, has more details regarding ideas of the recommendations for things that we can be reviewing right away related to being a redevelopment-ready community. There's a lot of resources available to us that we can have in our toolkit related to our city's ability to redevelop and thrive. There's also people within our community in terms of conserving our resources and being able to facilitate engagement amongst us who have been trained to facilitate story circles. Those are a fascinating experience where there's a prompt and no one can respond to what anyone says. So it's all about listening and a lot of things to really just be shared openly. And I remember when this training happened, I said, "The council needs this." So that was years ago, and I think if our council would be willing to do that, that would be an incredible experience, especially if it could be done with our community. This 30th example, using case studies. I, I think with every one of these things, I want to make sure everyone is in consensus with what we're suggesting and all on the same page. But I think in the situations, and that being one example, what we've walked through, if we can really look at some of the stages that that went through and where we could learn and grow in our relationship with one another, that would, that would help us a lot moving forward. Question number four, or suggestion number four. The word stewardship was brought to my awareness in terms of being leaders in the community. We are stewarding the public's resources and just being able to hear from one another about what that means. I think would help us be able to move forward. And then the last, the last item is related to leadership coaching. And this is going to come up again related to that resolution that we added here today. Item number P, that actually is for youth political coaching, so that's kind of taken care of there. So I just wanted to hear everyone's feedback because this is something that I've heard from the beginning that we need to be more coordinated amongst ourselves in terms of our goals and what we're working toward. And the public being able to see that demonstrated, I think, is really important. So I would just want to see how we can do that. And, and so the last thing is just whether it will be possible to have a workshop for morning or afternoon this month if that seems feasible. I know it's already the middle of the month, so.
Councilwoman.
I support having a workshop. I mean, I don't know if we need to do a full, full, long, full-day retreat considering some of the items that we have coming up in the last resolution. But I, but I would definitely appreciate you in a workshop. I think one of the things that we shuttle with our council, or I have shuffled with our council, is that OMA is quite restrictive. The only reason that it's restrictive is it's formal. And just because we can't meet in small groups of four, it doesn't mean that seven of us can't talk as long as the public is invited and part of that conversation. So I think having a workshop and doing more of these types of things will be helpful as we try to build a culture on our council that is more positive, that is more unified, and, and have a better collegial relationship with one another. And so just, just because we have to have our conversations in the public, doesn't mean we shouldn't have them. And so I support councilwoman's efforts to do a workshop, whether it be this month or during the actual, I think this would be very.
Mayor, for Jackson?
I agree. Like councilmember Wilson said about everything that's going on in September, do be excited and natural. I think it'd be worth it. Just believe that we can come across better and see one another, you know, where we, where we stand with one another and continue to grow. So I just believe we do have a good group of individuals that can continue to lead the city vote.
Yes, I agree too. And even the one that called in, I'll find out in a second, but they were talking about as far as that, what did it mean? And. I have been to funerals where people says, "Well, you know, you two of us in there." And, and they said, "No, that's not it." As long as there's other people that are there, not on this council, there's nothing wrong with getting together to do something. Even take a trip around town. As long as I can be a drunk passenger that is not on council, and I'm supposed to be a last for that.
So is this something that you want to spearhead, like?
I would be happy to. I, whenever it takes it to make it happen.
Okay, so, you know, definitely you want to make sure that everybody is available. I, you know, I know this is going to be money that we're going to spend on whoever we bring in to provide this for us. So finding the right facilitator, finding a big data center that not be available for. So if you want to take the lead, I think we all are in support.
Awesome.
So we'll make that official. City, quick, come here. Councilmember Lawler, yes. Lanell, yes. Williamson, yes. Clark, yes. Reed, yes. Jackson, yes. And Mayor Sanders, yes. So I have a motion to approve the resolution of the M99 reconfiguration.
Same thing.
Support. City manager, do you have a comment?
Yes. At the latter, at our last regular council meeting, probably y'all voting unanimously to report with proposing to have parking on both sides all the way from Iona to New York Street. So this is just a formal resolution that needs to be approved by council and then submitted to that project tomorrow.
Questions, candidates? Yes. Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mayor Sanders. I have included the correspondence I had after that meeting for all transparency to all council members and the public. And I, I, I don't really know how to respond to it because what was said was that from M.DR, when I asked the level of detail that we would include in our resolution, they said that we're working on a legal traffic order for no parking. And I can't get it to say at the locations based on the speed.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I think the need for a mechanic, a certified mechanic is needed ASAP because if we get all this equipment and then does anybody work on our, um, on our equipment? Guessing was wrong with it. I think a mechanic really should be one of the priorities, um, to check into because we just don't want anybody working on our material.
Yeah, and actually in the long run, it'll save, we send a lot of stuff out. One other thing that, so you guys know is, uh, we've started training again for the first time in the DPW in a number of years. As embarrassing as that is, uh, so that should help the equipment last a little longer if people want to use it properly.
Any other questions, comments? Yes, those would be wonderful. And these are very, very good updates. I really appreciate being able to have this discussion because I received feedback regarding the different needs and our, and our whole previous needs that we've had. You know, other council members have stated that this will be something to adjust the, we adjust the budget for immediately, like getting the bucket truck down as well. We had the previous correspondence that we did. So I'm just curious if other council members think, I don't know, does it require a budget minimum to, to be able to pay a mechanic thirty dollars an hour? Um, you know, what, what are the things that we need to change immediately in order for our staff to do what we're doing? How can we help us go through that?
Um, several parties definitely have to meet with our union because our DPWs, they are union positions. So I, I can't negotiate outside of the collective bargaining process. Um, so I would have to meet with the union to see if they're even willing to open um, their current contract to discuss, um, that type of position. So it's not as easy as just earning a certified mechanic on board, and I do have to work with our, uh, our union group. And though, and that way it will also affect the other wages within that union. So we also have to be mindful of that. We can't um, bring on positions like thirty something dollars an hour when all of our other physicians are not able to take that for that.
Councilwoman.
So what, when you guys look, um, at the, the, some of your things here, one thing that I've learned in, in my past is systematic, um, systems are very good at preventing maintenance. So what I mean by that is if, if you have a tool, and this might sound simple, but if you have a tool and you do a schematic of where that tool goes. So it's always back there. That's a preventive maintenance thing. And it could be just that simple. If you start with them as far as training to, to have two things, a place, everything needs a place and everything should go in its place. And then, you know, then that'll, that'll create a mindset of taking care of it. Because it'll be a visual for you.
Right, yeah. And that's something that, uh, Super Dad Kevin, he's very good at being organized and complimenting us. So he's pushing those guys to do that, they're doing better.
Any other questions or comments? So let's really go action about this. It's just for information as we go forward. Thank you for that. Uh, motion for through the seven thousand fifty-eight dollar for the water valve replacement. Yeah.
Okay, so this is for two water valves, a six inch and a four inch, uh, that are on Perry and Cav Street. And the reason we're selecting these valves, there's two broken water valves, and it's a part of the scope of project that the college is doing on here on the street. So while the college is excavating here on the street, we're going to be able to see this water man and get to those valves. I've worked with their contractor and we got a very good price to replace these valves. In my opinion, there's no better time to do them than now. They're gonna pay double to open them back up in a couple of years because we know the cost. So that's why I'm bringing it to you. Uh, we do have some money in the water budget, so we can cover this.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Do we know how long this, uh, project, um, with the steam lines are going to need?
I think that question's probably better directed to the college. I really, it's not a city project. The wa, this is just for two water valves.
I just was asking, listen, listen, Mr. Mayor.
I mean, in the spirit of what, from what we're saying, I certainly would expect the city would accept a time limit from the college around, oh, on future repose. So I'm hoping that there will be some communication between the college and the city around the timeline of that project.
Last I talked to, uh, quality excavator, they thought it was gonna be around November. I couldn't tell you exactly.
Did, did they say anything to you? Christopher Jackson just raised.
I can, I can.
We're in the middle of everyone.
No, that, that.
Any questions or comments for? Director Miller, uh, this is Benick.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Laniel.
Yeah.
Williamson.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
And Mary Stanger.
Yes.
Motion, um, to further discussion, running back to our environmental report. So Councilmember Clark actually asked, um, for an update on this, um, and I reached out to my department associates to, um, to see if there are any environmental concerns within the Ravencash area. We're talking with their team. Environment, environmental work is not required at this time, but, um, what we're looking, uh, what's been discussed for that year, it does not require it. Um, however, they have, they sent over at the end of last week, so a few questions that they just need, um, answers from, from us and they are looking into it further. Um, so we will reply to that and provide an updated sound. But speaking with them, there are no environmental issues or concerns. It's been a part for a, a number of years now, um, and they don't seem to need any issue. Questions, comments?
Yes, Councilwoman. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So is it, um, okay to clear up, just for clarification, to clear up that, um, there is deer feces that might prohibit anything from happening to, um, this park. Can we, um, does that clear that out? To say, is, when you say there's nothing wrong with it? Because I just was like that, when I asked about this park, um, before we got a new representative, I was asking, you know, what was wrong with it? And why were we not doing it over there? And it was told to me, and I can't remember who told me, um, but it was a big issue around deer feces.
We're talking with, uh, my associates, they did not mention that. They discussed just toxins that are known in contaminated areas that they did not mention in feces, but if there aren't any chemical toxins, I can imagine that being an issue, but I'd be happy to follow up on that one.
If that's okay, then Council, we have been, okay, good.
I know they usually play the, the soccer that they played over on Watson now. They used to play it up there. Because there were a lot of deer that was coming in, the dust was always around. Now it was that, clean that up before the kids could play. And that's why they moved it from there up to Watson.
Any questions, comments? All right. Uh, discussion on tree safety?
I have a concern and so does, uh, a few people who have heard me call, kind of concerned about, uh, where they're doing the sidewalks and trees that are, are, are thereby where they're digging out, they're cutting off the roots of the trees. And I know the tree right at the corner from my house, the guy had cut off a wood that was half as long as this thing here. And it's a concern because that tree already has a rotting down at the bottom. You can see where it's rotting and going up the tree. And if you're gonna cut off the roots and it's rotting going up the tree, then you have another windstorm and the tree is coming down. And there's a couple of them around like that. And then there's other places where I've gotten calls from people and said, well, what do you do about it? Because you're cutting the roots. The roots is what holds the tree in the ground. And so when you get a windstorm, the tree's gonna come up. So. What do you do? And I can show you a couple of those trees that I'm talking about, the five of them, the, the rotting, you can see.
Yeah, um, so in regards to, I, I've been, I'm a sidewalk partyer quite a bit, um, and I know what trees you're talking about. And there's, trees have lots of roots, and we've only taken a couple on the top, and that's only to get the sidewalk back in. Um, some of those are beautiful trees, gorgeous trees, and that will not affect them at all. I can't, I, I really couldn't justify cutting a tree down just because we killed a couple of roots on that tree. Now, if, if, if there is a tree that already looks like it's diseased or damaged or bad, then yeah, we justify taking it down. Uh, matter of fact, the engineer just pointed one out to me today, and we're probably gonna have that tree removed.
I took down, you know, what you said about calling about the trees.
Yeah.
So I talked to a couple of people, and I gave them a form with a sheet to fill out, so that when that tree falls down, it's the house. We'll go on there and date so that they know, you know, that that tree will be planted.
Yeah, they need to contact City Hall and the Bonita Law and complain.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So this is, seems like this is sort of an example of have, of us having to tell a, um, constituents, you know, we require an annual audit. Tell them, you know, for the prime business. Then a council member can inquire about it. So, um, this is just one of the things, it might be off a little bit, but this is one of the things I think we need to correct a lot of ourselves, um, as far as taking a complaint from, um, our constituents. We are, um, in city business, so we need to at least, um, do it the proper way. Have Kevin call up and make a complaint. They contacted, hey, I called down, sweet call, I talked to such and such. And you can find that, um, you know, check it out. But it's just another way of us, of me just demonstrating you need to follow procedures. That's okay, so.
Yes, Councilwoman, the, the, I'm Jackson, sorry. I agree with her, um, of having this conversation, and A, we have put that out in our email of how to, um, better serve our community by making sure that it's, it is, um, given to the proper individual. And then once it goes through those channels, we just tell them, let us know when you have done that, and then we'll follow up and see if we can. That should continue to keep going so that we won't have to be taking on extra complaints and, you know, taking notes against one another.
And this is another fund that we are really focusing on, our, um, the fund that we use for tree services. We are a tree city, um, here in, um, USA, so that means that we had to have planted, um, so many trees to qualify. So we have an abundance of trees in our community. And unfortunately, over the years, they've not, um, received the dedicated attention and maintenance that they are required. Um, we have gone long through, I think, our, um, true budget within the first half of the year. So we're aware that we need to increase that the funds in that area to betterly address the trees in our community. Um, but to be a certified tree USA committee, you have to have an abundance of, we know that tree we have damaged and dead trees all over. And we are actively trying to get those taken care of. So we don't have an issue where it's falling on, um, a resident's house or their car causing damage, um, that they are, they have to deal with.
Yes, Councilwoman. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. When we cut down trees, are we replacing them?
We replace them.
Are we replacing them enough where we can leave a tree?
Yes. Can I say one more thing? Uh, actually, two things. The first is, if, if somebody made a complaint more than a year ago, please urge them to make a new complaint, uh, with all the turnover we had. There's no guarantee we still have that original complaint. So if they make a new one, that would be really helpful. We can get it added to the list. Uh, second, please urge people never to go near down power lines. Um, during the storm, we were out a lot, and it was amazing how many people were just walking around power lines. So, yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Uh, discussion, um, between the other part?
Last county, I think it was, or was it two, five, three, two, something like that, lose track here. We had the auditors present the twenty twenty five audit findings. Part of their presentation is if they find anything that they consider a material weakness or, um, in this case, it wasn't anything that, uh, gave us a negative impact on the audit. Uh, we still had a, a clear, clean audit in their opinion. But there were a couple of things that they noted that they need to see improved, like improve that. And we just wanted to give you guys an update on what those things were for sure. I think they pointed them out, but we wanted to give you an update, um, kind of what problem about and what we're, we're going on to fix them. So, um, the first thing they had, and there's a lot of information, I think, that put them back at, um, hopefully, if I got a chance to read it, I'll try to kind of just summarize this. There were a couple of journal entries that they felt were net or either missed, uh, made incorrectly or missed. And then when we discussed it with them, it turned out to be two particular entries. Um, in the overall scheme of things, I looked last year, I looked in twenty twenty, and we did just short of thirty thousand journal entries. So we missed two, you know, on that. I'll take it, but, uh, these two in particular were, is a little frustrating because one involved the Erie or the Irwin Street project, which has turned out to be a very cumbersome project. As you recall, that started one year in the fall and I laughed over into the next year. Whenever you carry a project like that with grant money over into the two fiscal years, it confuses the, or complicates matters. And on top of that, we have to use spiral money handled through the state. So you got a couple extra parties involved, and then you also have to use a grant administrator firm. And there, one more party that's involved, and the communication has not been great. Uh, then the individual of the state left towards the end of it, got replaced with someone else. And I'll be honest with you, we're still trying to close out that grant, even though that, what Irwin had wrapped up almost over a year ago. It's just been, like I said, the, the communication between the grant administrator and the state. And also, I mean, it's just, and of course, you got contractors, engineers, and you got a lot of the issues. I mean, it's not a queer, it's not a case of not knowing what we spent. Um, it's, it's an issue on our end of. We take money from a lot of different funds for the match, you know, the sewer fund is paying for the sewer lines, the water fund is paying for the water lines. The street improvement funds is paying for the pavement. And you're trying to go through and they bid off these projects and determine, you know, how much is coming from the sewer fund, how much from the water fund. Even the sidewalk, you know, there's some sidewalk funds in there if they have to replace sidewalks. So it's just a lot of communication. Uh, I think we're on top of it now. Some information up to the state, um, I think it was last week, last Thursday, have her background. So hopefully, we're getting to a point where we can close this out. We're all balanced, um, with the state, whoever's in agreement with that. So hopefully, that one will be resolved. The other one was kind of a tricky one too, because it was a CARES Act grant. And they did it in two parts. They paid a part of it, the biggest chunk of it came in November. And then they told us that once all the applicants came in for that grant, they'd determine how much was left and pay the rest to the local communities at some point later in, in, you know, later. And it turned out, our case, it come in May. Generally, anything that comes in after sixty days, we can't pull back into the prior year. And like I said, the second payment did not come in until May. But the auditor still wrote us up for not pulling that back into, uh, the prior year. Even though when they were here doing our field work, we didn't even know how much it was gonna be, because they came in in April. We didn't know how much we were gonna get because the state had not done the final calculations. So it was kind of a picky, nitpicky thing, I felt. And like I said, CARES Act is something new, you know, none of us had dealt with it before. So anyway, they felt that they needed to write self court, and that was the two, since we got opinion on that. Going forward, obviously, we're gonna try to, we've had a conversation with the auditors, we're gonna try to change a little bit on how we're doing things. Hopefully, have a little bit better chance to review some of our stuff that we're in, so hopefully, we can, we're done there from back again. Um, another issue was an internal control issue over credit cards. Uh, keep in mind a couple of things here. They, a lot of times, if they find a weakness of prior years, they will carry that forward until, you know, they're, they're kind of tracking our progress to see. And, and in a sense, it's kind of helping us or working with us to see what steps were taken to prove it. And the other piece of this is when you say credit cards, it encompasses a lot of things. It's not just your typical charge card you think of. It's, you know, we have gas cards, department store cards, and several things like that. So this all started, but honestly, when prior to the venture Rufus was here, everybody's worried about that issue. We know that one of the things that triggered, um, the investigation with her was not providing some receipts. So this has kind of carried forward some, um, that particular account. She had set that account up. We got it all closed out. Reestablished a new account, totally different. Uh, it's one that I feel very confident we have a lot more control over. We can go in, we, me and myself and the deputy finance director can go in at any time, twenty-four hours or twenty-four seven, we can go online and shut a account off immediately if there's an issue. And that's kind of what we're doing now, that we're not getting receipts. If someone's not turning them in, we'll just give them a warning, say, hey, we need these receipts. And if we don't get them, we go and shut their car off until we get them. So we have a lot of our control over that. Other things we're working on, like a lot of the department store cars, we're trying to close them all out now. And like with gas cards, um, one thing they look at, not just receipts, but I mean, their definition, I guess, of receipts is, is like proper logs, stuff like that. We're working on that. We pretty well got that hammered out, um, the policies on that. It's tricky because the different apartments are so different. Um, it's a kind of safety, has fire trucks and crew, their cars, patrol cars, DPW has, you know, all their trucks, but they have lawnmowers, they have chainsaws, they, we, you know, so, so there's a lot of time to buy in gas cans. So there isn't, well, you know, you can't put mildew in there. You know, there are just a lot of different issues that we're trying to sort through to make sure we have good controls on that. So. Um, but one thing I want to point out on that is they didn't say that they were suspicious or, you know, fraudulent or anything like that. They just said there were some missing receipts. And our policy says, you know, we have to have receipts. We are aware of it. Um, we've been, they've kind of been helping us. And I think we got a pretty good hand on it now. Anytime, I can assure you, anytime this happened recently, we're shutting the car off. So, um, I think we got a pretty good handle on that. And it, you know, this, a lot of this dates back to, you know, earlier years when some more, probably, some other issues that were a little bit more, um, concerning with going on. So I think we got that all in control now. And the final weakness that they could assign was some dispersals for property taxes being made timely. And that was primarily just, uh, staffing. We were, you know, there's only we're going full, there's only four and a half of us in there. When I say half, it's the deputy, deputy treasurer split. Um, there's only four full-time, not counting income tax person, because there kind of been income tax. Got at least four and a half of us to do all that stuff. And during that period from twenty twenty, the deputy treasurer position was vacant for a while. Um, a lot of that, and when it did get filled, we had an election going on, so we were kind of pushing her to help on the election side. So we didn't get as much help on the finance side from that position. So going forward, uh, that position should be filled, obviously. So, um, we're definitely working on making sure we get those disburse timings. Any questions, others?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Um, Tommy did an excellent job. I read it from the top to the end. You, you would feel a lot, you would feel a lot with these individuals. But the one example that I just have, just kind of a couple of questions would have been on top of page one seventy-five. When they said, for example, to me, they print the payroll checks. Did they go through that process as well when they did the audit?
They do. They go, they go through everything.
They do. Do they go, do they go through, um, retirement funds and all that as well?
Yeah.
Do they go through anything that we can retract back? And bring it, they see all that, right? Because you give anything, what goes like that is put into in some kind of, uh, form, so everyone would know what's taking place.
Yes, I mean, if they suspect that, well, first of all, you know, they don't, like, you know, they don't look at a hundred percent, I would think, that you say. And if they see anything suspicious from their samples or even maybe suspicious, maybe just be something, maybe they're sampled, maybe they didn't feel like it, um, gave them a confidence that they wanted. So they will come back and dig a little deeper and ask for a little more, et cetera. So, so if there is something that they're seeing, they definitely will go back in time. Who, you know, whatever they ask, we'll provide some money.
And then say, good job with cutting off those credit tax, I think, right then. Because I know, um, there is a problem with individuals not turning their receipts and anything, so.
Yeah, it's, you know, we've had a history of, you know, from years back, as long as I remember, where a lot of times if someone needed a card, they just wouldn't open the account. Whether it be at the carbon store or, you know, tractor supplier's center or wherever. And it just wasn't a good control on, you know, who authorized the cards to be opened and who had the cards and all that. And the only other thing I want to mention, then, moving on is in regards to, um, city income tax. So I don't know if many of you you see Paulson residents or anything, but to give you an idea of kind of what's going on, a little background. Uh, when you think of property tax, for example, it's pretty simple, you know, you see the property and the successor puts a value on it. And we can sign the bill based on that value. Income tax, totally different, you know, it, it's kind of, as you all know, you know, when you do your federal or state return or whatever, I mean, it's kind of an honor system to some degree. Um, about who's in town, I mean, who lives in town, who's outside the city. If they work in town or if they don't, you know, so it's, it's tricky to just, there's not a good way for us to just sit back and assume that everybody's gonna hand in uh, tax returns for all, one of the tax. What we can do though is the software company we work with has the ability, we can request information from the state, from their income tax returns. And we can then do comparisons to see who's in the city limits, what they filed with the state, and compare to what they filed with us to see if it matches. Um, it's a time, it takes a lot of time doing that. And there's a lot of hoops you gotta jump through because the state treasurer is not gonna just give that information out readily. They, we have to sign a lot of documents, like confidentiality, we get audited, we have to make sure. It's stored in, you know, confidential areas and safe places, so there's a lot that goes into it, so because of that. It had not been done routinely for several years, and we're trying to. Um, catch up, I guess, if you will, so we worked with this company, um, that we've contacted with last couple of years. They've helped us get caught up on getting all that information with state. And now they're, and they are doing the comparisons now, and now the letters are going out. And the system automatically generates letters and picks them out, so a lot of the letters as well. Like we get calls, people, so they're not understanding why they got it. A lot of times it's just something simple that, you know, didn't get turned in or, um. I even got a letter once myself, because I forgot to turn that copy of my file. Ten forty, so, I mean, it just, like I said, sometimes it's just simple, like, oh, we didn't get this information, please provide it to us. Uh, we had another individual that had, had been working and then recently retired. And we didn't know that, so it kicked off, the system kicked off, our course or pension income is taxable, so. Once he explained to us, I am retired, this is my, it's all pension, so, you know, it's no problem, I mean. It's no problem, we just need to, we're just trying to get people to call and, and if you get the letter, call. Explain the situation or show us, or, you know, so we can kind of get things straightened out, um. On the flip side, for, there's a lot of narrow gentleman, and, uh, we're talking a lot of that. We can potentially collect, so, um, we feel it's necessary, I know people like. Fantasies are getting the stuff in the mail, but, you know, we're talking, you know, it could be a couple hundred thousand dollars for a general fund, so. It's pretty sizable, so, we're, you might hear people complain, the big thing I might point out is because the state is so. Concerned about confidentiality. Um, the best advice I can give you guys is just to have them call our income tax, Eric Cogan, our income tax person. Um. You guys don't want to know what they make, or, you know, what their income is because. This is very confidential, and the state's not gonna like it if, well, that information's getting in the wrong hands, even if they're coming up to you and trying to explain. You know, it's, oh, okay, I understand, but all the city, talk to Eric, uh, we'll get things straightened out, you know, so. Uh, questions, oh. Turns parts.
Yes.
So just to piggyback off of what, uh, finance director B told the council, so. There's a process that his office goes through with, you know, warning letters and pay by your taxes. And actually, there's several letters, my understanding, um, so the finance department compiled a list of significantly delinquent. Uh, taxes and, uh, in the past couple of months, my office has signed close to a hundred warrants. For non-payment or not filing their taxes.
Yes, and if I can just add one thing, I know a lot of people file their taxes online, unfortunately, the city, we can't accept electronic. Um, tax returns, so I think a lot of people, when they submit that, hit that submit button, do TurboTax or whatever platform you use to. They get sent to the city, unfortunately, it's not, you still have to print that off and come down and complete. Um, the booklet, booklet that we have here at City Hall and turn in the hard copy, um, so I know that is what, um. Holds a lot of people over, um, derails a lot of people, because they submitted it online and that everything's safe there, unfortunately, you have to print it off. And bring us an actual physical hard copy.
And that, that's a great point, allow me to, uh, point out too, thank you, Senator Snyder. For reminding me, because it's not, not only if you're doing your own, but sometimes you gotta, guys prepare. Um, some cities, the larger ones, will accept, um. There hasn't been a lot, but there's starting to be a few more that are, are accepting electronic, um, returns. We're exploring that, we may start doing that soon, especially since we're working with this company that, um, is helping us. They probably have more technology or, um, could help us in that area, but, uh, right now, as Senator Snyder said. You know, sometimes to prepare, if you go and hire them, you know, they think, oh, I do for, I got customers in Grand Rapids and. They, you know, I just sell them electronically, and yeah, Grand Rapids will sell them electronically, but unfortunately, we don't get them. And sometimes prepare doesn't, you gotta remind them to prepare for that, I think Jackson just started something electronically. I think just coming from here, or maybe nineteen, but, um, so like I said, you just gotta remind them, you're prepared, you're prepared. What are you doing yourself, just print it out and bring it into us. Any other questions?
I want you to approve the resolution, like, thirty, uh, city council is committed to affirming council relations and restoring public trust. The whole, the whole, the whole, the whole.
Yeah, so, um, I can start, but there were more fingerprints on this than just nine, um. So this resolution was born out of an initial resolution that Councilman Lenou had presented, um, last week for the council packet. Um, and, um, to Councilman Lenou and Councilman Quarters Credit, um, they looked away to kind of meet with me and talk about. So many different things related to how we work together on council, um, and we were able to put together what we thought was a joint resolution. Um, to help create and build a new culture on council, uh, one that involves trust, I mean, if you look here, trust, transparency, positive working relationships. Uh, and when we say trust, the public's trust in us and, uh, what we are doing, and what we also acknowledge is that we, as a council, had the opportunity to do that. We, right now, as council members, are, are willing to do that, um, even if council members of past have not. Um, and, and we also recognize that this has been a struggle for a very long time. Um, the most important pieces in here, and I, and I would defer to Councilmember Harper, Lenou, and Councilmember, uh, Jackson, who also helped with this. Um, not all four together, we were working in separate groups in various other places, uh, just to keep that all out there. Yeah, just, um, there's a really lovely picture of the three of us working together on Friday night, um. The, some of the important takeaways, I think, in this resolution are, uh, the action items, um. Again, all of this important, and for me, the most important piece is having key, that requires action from the council, and so. Uh, I just wanted to review those out loud specifically, um, we would like to put together a, um, committee on council, um, kind of a council relations task force. To, um, that will be responsible for holding this all humble, for having the hard conversations that I think some of us, all of us sometimes don't want to have with each other. Uh, also making recommendations to the council about changing or improving how the council works with one another, or our code of ethics and conduct. Um, and also facilitate, uh, small group conversations that help members understand each other, again, this is very much in line with what Councilmember Lenou put forward about a. Um, council member retreat, um, the second item that, um, I think is very important as well is the, um, immediate, um. Search and hire for an MML coach or consultant for the city manager, uh, to assist her in her role with council. Uh, I think, um, equally as important is the, um, hiring of an MML consultant or coach who work correctly with council. And then to even button that together even more, um. Intimately is that those, charging those consultants and coaches with working with each other and creating the public record of what they're recommending to council. And to the city manager and how we're gonna work together, and one of the things I have heard as this resolution, um, came out was, well, we're gonna spend money on these consultants and coaches. And, and that's true, we, we are gonna spend money on consultants and coaches. And we spend a lot more money when we cycle through big administrative, administration blowups, I think one of the things you all recognized. Was that we wanted to preserve the integrity of having a city manager, getting qualified city managers, having a stay. Uh, but also making sure that we're working together, achieving the goals that we set out before us, and so. Um, we think that the small amount comparatively that we are going to spend on coaching versus what we've had to spend on transfers over the last four years. Um, will save the citizens a lot of tax dollars. The other, um, piece that we would like to highlight here that we thought was, um, really important, I, I, I've looked to other communities like Eaton Rapids. Um, who do similar things, um, but we wanted to have a monthly study session before the, before the first council meeting of the month. So on that same night, if you do it, so that it's an open discussion amongst council members about whatever the issues are that are coming forward. It's not, it's not an opportunity for us to ask questions about each other in the public to watch, so that when we come to the meeting, we're more firmly and fully informed of where each other. Are at on the topics that we're gonna discuss, or if there's something brewing, being able to talk about that. Um, and or invite others in who might have conversations with who could be helpful to us, so, um, council member Lenou brought up last night, but, you know. What if we have questions about recreation and the life and safety relationship and what's going on there, like, there could be a much easier way to have a conversation with the leaders of that. While not having this big formal discussion where there's a lot of rules and, uh, not, not that formal is formally good, but, um. The formality of it all, um, and so we, and we thought it would be great to dovetail that into each of the, take it into the communities. Um, so it's each of our precincts, and so, uh, council member Lenou has offered the first one to be increasing five. Um, before the next meeting on October twenty-first, and so there would be a hard stop at six forty-five, sorry, at six, hard stop at six forty-five. Um, but then the mayor and that council member get to drive that agenda for that meeting, um, or help create that agenda, so if there's something pertinent that needs discussed. Um, to the mayor and that council member, which will also force us all to work more collaboratively together. Uh, which I think is what the public, especially at our last special meeting, wants so badly of us. Um, and then finally, um, it is a new commitment to, um, acting in accordance with the council rules, procedures, um, and code of conduct. And making sure that we are going to, um, have the highest standard of leadership on council. So that, that is the, um, press of what we, I think, I haven't seen that, so I think I'm in almost all the highlights. Uh, but I want to open it up to, uh, Councilmember Jackson, Councilmember Lenou, Councilmember Hart, because this, um. For whatever reason, the very collaborative process, um, but we'd like to see this be more, um, born out of. Like proactivity versus always being in distress or something, you know, bad, causing that, so. Um, we think that we can, as a group, commit to doing that for the public, and then we can start now with that.
Ready?
Maybe, maybe Councilmember Williams, I would actually want to hear from the, the rest of the, the council members who worked on this process to see if this addition will be that.
Appreciate the hard work that all of you put into this reservation and coming to, or some type of, not necessarily a agreement, but just, uh, a way to move forward. So that, you know, the, the people that we serve are, have the trust, um, that we need. That to move our city forward, so, you know, hopefully, like, you know, like I said. Having this training, having professionals come in and lead us, uh, you know, many of us are new. Um, some mistakes have been made, and we're going through those mistakes, and we just want to make sure we're moving forward and we're going in the right direction.
Yes, Councilwoman Robber, thank you, Ms. Mayor, um. I do agree that we do have some work to work on for, for ourselves, um, as council, and we can, we can work more together. Um, a lot of these things that I mentioned in this resolution, we have already talked about, and we were doing our, um. Our council goals, so a lot of it is already set in stone, we just have to put it together and put it in place. Um, a lot of things that I see, um. As far as making a, a three-person committee, um, I think when we do that, and it's just my opinion. But when we do that, we don't, the rest of us don't get to hear all of the things that are being discussed. It's just what, and it's my theory, what the three agree on to tell us. Um, that's, that's, that's just my opinion, and, um, I feel like having somebody come in and tell us what to do. We just did that, Coco Seaworth just came and gave all of us the business about what we supposed to do and what we not supposed to do. We all know that we got a fault, who would have ever thought that, if I asked my city manager, can I get a shovel? Because I know the drain's gonna be clogged, clogged up this weekend, because it's gonna be a lot of rain, who would have thought that was a violation? Which it is a violation, because I'm dealing in her city business. So, um, I think a lot of this can be self-checked, um, and I have a list over here, but a lot of it, but, uh, to, to sum it up. We know what's, what we supposed to do, we do, and us ourselves are not helping ourselves account. Sometimes when, um, I'm gonna give an example, it was a lot of ruckus, um, a couple of weeks ago, where, um, when we had a special meeting. I asked, you know, for, um, our mayor to, you know, hit the yarrow or whatever, sometimes it takes for you to be reminded, you know. Maybe it was so much going on that she forgot she could hit the yarrow and get some order, Coco taught us that. Get some order, don't let, you know, others take over the meeting, whether it's us sitting here or anybody in the chamber. So a lot of this is your self-correction, um, we have, uh. Council rules and procedures, code of ethics, robust rules, our charter, our city attorney, who can make us aware. That, hey, he can stop us and say, hey, y'all are getting ready to violate some stuff, now don't forget about this right here, is in the city charter. We already have everything that we need, you know, and if we need to make, uh, a, a better, uh, connection with Haley. Why do I need everybody to tell me how to make that connection with her, I got my own relationship with her, I know how to go to her and, and. Um, say, hey, Haley, you know, I got this on my mind, can you help me with it? You know, I'm not asking you to tell me what to do, but, you know, put it in order so that I can present it to council, um, my way. You know, um, so I figure like, that's, that's what we do, we gotta use, use her for some things. You know, a lot of us is not using her for the right thing, and we gotta understand, really, what is it that we doing? To not include her or to, to ask her for her help, what is, what is wrong with that, it's nothing wrong with it, she can lead us. If we go to a meeting outside of, in here, and they're talking about, uh, somebody got money for, uh, another web that. I'm gonna say, Haley, can you come to this meeting with me so I can, you know, get the right information, make sure I'm getting the right information so I can take it back. You know, to the council and, um, present it to them, you know, I, I mean, that's, that's what I see, I see right now, I see a lot of. Self-checking need to go on, um, so, I mean. It's all up to us, but we do have all of this, and we have a city, a city attorney that we're not, that we're not using, although I know say that. We, we got the tools, we got them.
So the meeting that we had, um, I don't want to paint a picture that it was cozy. And that we were all in agreement because that was not the type of meeting that Shane and Linda and I had. We actually did some face-to-face and discussed some things that needed to be discussed, and we put our. Grown-up clothes on and accepted things that we saw in ourselves that need to be changed, and we. Things that we saw that we, we changed in the council, so I don't want anybody to think that that's what type of meeting it was, because it wasn't. Um, it took us a while to get where we needed to get, to be as we were talking, and. Out of the conclusion of it, the reason why we put the, um, put some more word or language in it. Was because we wanted to have a positive outcome of the, of the whole concept of what we were trying to present, yes, this is a new council. But the whole thing of it is, when you, um, are representing your, your precinct. And there's feelings and emotions in your precinct, um, that they're, that they feel like. Unbalanced, in order for it to become together and get balanced, you have to share the heart, and have the heart talks. And be able to say those type of things, so what we were hoping, um, out of this is that's exactly what will come up. Out of this, um, resolution, is, you know, sometimes we wanna be politically correct. And sometimes it's necessary, but there's other times where you just need to say what needs to be said. Correct what needs to be corrected. correct what needs to be corrected. That's the only way you create a better atmosphere and a better group of people. And I'm very thankful for the meeting with Shane and Linda. We learned a lot about each other. And I'm even happy that we're going to have you because I believe it's going to build relationships. And out of this, what you can look at is when a person leaves or moves on to a different part of life and no longer on council, the reputation and the coherency that you build should be able to be a mentorship for the next person that comes in. You know, just because I'm not on council, whoever takes this seat, I'd be open to talking to them about, you know, I haven't had to know the stuff that I don't need to know. But I would be open to talking to them about how to manage and handle themselves in this particular way. And the same thing with the city. You know, we need to build relationships. You know, precinct one, precinct five, precinct three, precinct two. That is the start. This city is too small for that. We need to be able to come together and build this city great as it was. And I believe that's what will come out of this whole thing.
Councilwoman Lawler.
I would just like to say, when we were having talks with Coco and the rest of them that council leaders, referring to, a lot of these people weren't on council. And I tell you, MML has some good councilors that come in and they give you good information and they, it's a breath of fresh air. So I'm all for that.
Councilwoman Lawler.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'm not against it, but I'm just saying that we are spending money on training we already have.
Indeed.
I mean, even if some of us had a training with Coco back in the day, Coco came up to date to talk to all of us. She really did. So and as far as like, we want to meet with, people meeting with, to set this agenda, we already got that in place, is the city manager and the mayor. None of that is stopping us from going in there. None of us, not four of us, is nothing stopping us from going in here to, if you want to see what's going on or you want to add something to it. It's nothing prohibiting any of us except for four people. If you only need three. So nothing is prohibiting us from whenever they set the agenda to go in there and see what's going on, if that's what we want to do. I hear all the time about how city workers need help. That's the more money that we should be regulating our own stuff and we should be knowing what to do. We don't have the training. I can't say that enough. But the city do need some workers. The workers are saying they need workers. So I'm just saying, you know, to put your priorities together, whatever we decide to do, we don't have to do it together. But I'm just saying is, we already have this training. And if there's something that we sit here and we say, we all said that, you know, it's not going to be like previous council. What it's going to be like is what we pay it to be like. So let's pay it to be that way. We did it under council goals. That's all we got to do is do it. That's it. That's it. And if you want to have something where you want to have a special meeting or something and you want to pave the way for down to the next 10 years, put it in your council rules. We can add and we can take away from a lot of stuff. But, I mean.
Councilwoman Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. I appreciate the way you're doing that, Councilwoman Lawler. One of the ideas I have with regard to the task force or committee, because I heard as soon as I got on council, pushback or feedback regarding, and I actually was just visiting one of the trades that I had as a VDA member for MML, saying that even three is perhaps compromising, oh, if there's any potential deliberation. So I recognize that being a concern. And that's why I added in there that that would be in relationship with the public at large, always open to the public. I encourage the press to come and be able to report and share. I also think that rotating those formal members of the council being on that would be another way to ensure that it's not just three people meeting repeatedly. I think another big thing for me, I agree wholeheartedly in coaching. Coaching is not training. I actually just was able to meet with experts in coaching out of Rice University. And they said if a coach offers any advice, they're fired. Coaching is not even advising. It's a different process of helping a person build their skillset. And I think it's mentioned almost every meeting that we're in the council and there's a lot of green on this entire body. But we're also walking through a pandemic. We're walking through economic crisis. We've had study sessions regarding our economic development that also exploded in some issues. And so working through what is happening right now requires additional help. I do not think that we have the skillset amongst ourselves to do what is needed alone. I think that we have the skillset within our resources, within our community. I think that the people here are more than equipped to do what's necessary. But I think getting some additional assistance right now is going to be essential. I also remember when we were in the process of hiring a new city manager, something we immediately took on as a new council. It was mentioned that due to the different circumstances, not just our council, our candidate, but the city as a whole right now, training would be essential. So even if this is coaching or training, however we're applying it, that's something that has repeatedly come up and I'm not aware of us formally supporting our city manager in that process and having that relationship. With regard to, you know what, I'll stop there, but I hear you in terms of the employees calling for needs. We had the St. John Hall meeting where there was a lot of things brought to our attention. And I think the formal resolution that our city needs right now does require some additional help. And also, I guess, the last thing to clarify, the resolve where we're talking about having a study session before the first meeting, that's not establishing the agenda. That's having a different kind of meeting. This is something I've spoken about with other council members, the need for us to intentionally look into specific areas of our city or who wanted to talk about some sort of idea or something to collaborate on. It's just an opportunity to open that space and then be intentional about being each precinct to do so. So that, yeah, that's something special as well.
And I would say, because I also, I hear Councilwoman Lawler's concern too. And one of the things that makes this resolution different than what we've done before is that while nothing is prohibiting us from working together, there isn't anything that's forcing us to work together and requiring of it as council people to really have these hard conversations. And for the three years that, almost three years that I've been on council, there tends to be a habit of like, certain groups form or certain people have certain conversations that other people feel. And again, some of this involves feelings and it's not my natural state of being to care about feelings, although I'm working on it. I acknowledge this, this is something I learned, I'm not a feelings person. But when one conversation is led by a group of council members and then other council members are feeling left out, whether that be intentional or not, it does create the vicious cycle and it grows and the cycle is out of control. And I've seen it more than once before I was on council, I saw it. We've seen it several times since I've been on council. And I think we have a huge opportunity with the community that this time next year, when we're having our meetings and we're talking about the big things that the public aren't showing up to in an angry way, but in a more positive way with us. And we have a responsibility to do that. And I think this is a huge opportunity for this council. And hoping for the unanimous consensus. I want the restoration of public trust starts now, it starts tonight. And I'm hoping that we can get a unanimous consensus and really commit ourselves to be better.
I disagree with Shane. But yes, what I wanted to say, Chief Councilwoman Lawler, is, you know, I agree and I understand. I do believe that it is a thing that we have to actually put our actions. As we put them on paper, we need to walk the walk and not just talk the talk. And I just believe that this will give the city some kind of more relief because they don't know what's inside of our charter and don't know who we are. Or then either at the same time, you could know that and how they were, how things came to us and said, why are you going to do this, this, or whatever? But I just believe us coming together like this and agreeing as Shane had put, that is showing everyone that we are able to do what you want to do.
I agree with you, but I don't agree with you. Like I said, we will probably miss someone, which if that's what I'm going to do, it's fine. But it's just a lot of self. And yes, you can put anything on paper, but your actions is going to show it. You can say whatever you want to.
That's true.
But it's your action. We set the tone to say, okay, y'all, y'all trust us. We set that. If we don't have no trust in each other or we lean into little groups or whatever, they don't notice and they come in. I've been here five years. Whatever works for us is what works for us. And we have to stop thinking about what happened in. Because when we did our goal-setting session, we said what we were going to do. So let's do what we said we're going to do. Not will that be in, no, we back then, back then.
I guess the only thing is just a quick understanding about dollars and cents is that I think we all have that on our hearts. And I just don't want to send out additional dollars or something like that.
I just think it should be revised, but that's not what.
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. I know you already said this, but I want to iterate because this is something in the work I've done in our community, we have to invest in ourselves. We have to invest in people. We spend a lot of time talking about how we're going to invest in roads or housing or childcare and otherwise. But it's the people who are going to enact anything that we are going to create. And if us as the decision-makers of our city and those who we are working with in accordance to roll out anything we create are not investing in ourselves, it's not going to be sustainable. And I think we really have to demonstrate what we're hoping to roll out within the city at large in terms of investing. I know I'm on the current workforce development task force. That's what I've worked on intentionally in Project Rising Tide. And it's hard to attract the employers that we have when we're not investing in our people's training. So I think that this is something we do have to look very closely at. Can we be resourceful? Like, you know, what is the level that we need? Is it short-term? What is the actual cost? Can we compare options? And I know everyone on here is very concerned about the fiscal responsibility that we're in charge of. And I think that that's going to be part of this process as well.
Councilwoman Lawler.
Yeah.
Lanu.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes. We're good at that.
Councilwoman Lawler, in the next agenda. Just a lot of new public comments. But this time, anybody who was looking in the gallery has the opportunity to come up and speak. How proper decorum is going to be required, of course, in the past three minutes. Would you say your name and address?
Mark Melly, 422 Elizabeth Street. I just want to thank you for doing a thankless job. I know how hard all of you work, real jobs. But you devote so much time to the city and you take tons of heat. It doesn't matter what decision you make, you're going to be criticized for it. And I just want to say I'm grateful for you representing me in this community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Mark and thank you for Resolution 30. In an effort to get transparency for myself, after the August 24th meeting, I sent an email on August 27th to council people in care of Mayor Snyder and City Manager Snyder. Out of that, a FOIA request 27 was issued and with responses due back last Friday, September 3rd. And the email was in regards to Resolution 27. And I wanted answers and I did get some. But I need clarification or I did not get answers on what person or persons, including Albion City Government and employees, Albion businesses, college, constituents, organizations had input or decided to pursue putting Albion City Manager Haley Snyder unadministratively for failure to submit her self-evaluation in a timely manner. I was curious as to why it was necessary to call a meeting at the last minute and not inform the mayor or constituents what the meeting was about. I was also concerned about who had input into drafting and writing the resolution and who wrote the resolution and what steps and timeline were taken to enter the matter internally. It is my understanding, City Manager Snyder received her self-evaluation on August 16th. And she, I believe, turned it in August 23rd, which was Monday. That may have to be checked. It is my recommendation to rescind City of Albion Resolution 2021-27 with a unanimous vote. I'd like to be done with it. Thank you very much.
Mike Lanu, 912 West Dairy, Precinct 2, Land Re decrease. And I just want to say that I thought that it was a beautiful thing that you guys did tonight for giving. I don't know if majority of people here realize that forgiveness took place here because people were really truly harmed by things that were said in the August 24th meeting. And you graciously forgave them tonight with the passing of Resolution 30. And that took grace. Wasn't easy and God bless you for that. I know we say the Pledge of Allegiance, we say one nation under God. I'd say Albion is now one nation under God. And we proved it tonight, didn't we? Okay? But with the misinformation of the previous person that was up here speaking, I think you've got to look at full disclosure and revealing what, why people are still misinformed about what actually is going on here amongst you and why that Resolution 30 was so necessary. It coded over some of the sins. It was like carpeting. Carpeting covers a multitude of sins. Thank you.
Raymond Barkley, 903 East Michigan Avenue. Just a few things. One, I just wanted to highlight that there's been some discussions that the college is not following protocols in terms of permitting zoning, in terms of how we approach our zoning ordinances and communication. I just have to. I just have to let folks know that the last six months, at least since I've been here, but I think before, um, we are following all protocols. We are meeting with the city routinely to understand what those are. We are getting feedback and best approaches. We are taking and soliciting advice on that work and, um, and, and routinely, uh, checking in to make sure that we're following all the necessary procedures. It's a little confusing why folks on the council don't know about that activity. Uh, in particular, the Huron Street work has been formally approved. Um, every single I-bought at T-Cross and we're happy to share that. I've shared a email with, uh, the mayor, um, Haley, uh, and the city team that they can forward to City Council to, to detail that. Uh, so I just want to make sure everybody realizes that. A couple of things I also want to note, um, the city has, uh, we have offered to see on many occasions to partner. Uh, the conversation that was up here earlier by Huron is a great example, I think, of partnership where we're opening up the streets, we're making available our engineers to discuss with the city what's going on there. The city sees an opportunity to address a deficit and they are. And we welcome that and we support that and want to do that more. Uh, and we've been talking about that, whether it be road closures, uh, in, in terms of cleaning up the roads and, and repaving, milling those roads, um, maintenance and grounds. We talked about how we might, uh, join forces and try to figure out how to address some of the equipment deficits and maintenance and grounds deficits that we have in the community. Um, what else? Fleet and equipment, um, and project work. We've talked about, uh, how we can share students on projects like GIS, mapping trees, doing other things, um, to try to understand the needs of the city and, and how we approach that. I'm not sure how, if folks realize how many things we're really partnering with the city on. Uh, and I can provide that list, uh, and what we want to partner with the city on. Um, I think the other thing I just want to highlight is the M-ninety-nine issue is a, is a, was an opportunity missed in our view. We had an opportunity to address safety there. We're disappointed how it went. We hope that, that the team here will consider, um, you know, uh, the, a couple of things that we sent forward, in particular, uh, preserving some setback areas, preserving parking, uh, and so on.
Thank you, Dr. Barkley.
Yep.
Good evening. Morris Berry, two fifteen in Small Barry, Albion, Michigan. I just want to say with the passing of, uh, Resolution Thirty, I think it's a, a very good idea. I think that the trust of the public has been lost on the council, uh, this one and previous councils. I think even though, uh, Markola has a good comment, I think knowing and exercising all of the procedures is not being followed. And I think that an outside entity to help gain the trust of the public is definitely not necessary. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilmember Brown, ten sixteen South Superior Street. Um, two small, two small issues than the, the larger issue. So one, uh, when you all waived the fee for the nonprofit women, I just want to make sure is there a policy in place? So if any other nonprofit asks that, um, on what basis is that based on? Because of, you know, another nonprofit coming to ask to do the same thing and you all would have to give a legal explanation for why there was a different treatment. Um, and the other thing is I'm, I'm kind of concerned, uh, too, about just when it's, when it comes to information for the council. It was normally, uh, for, you know, I've been involved with the city or was on the council back since like ten, two thousand and ten. And I know that it's a very common practice if there was someone in the audience with expertise on the matter at hand for the mayor, the council person to ask for that person to speak. So I know, um, Dr. Barkley asked to speak to one of the issues. And there was a thing about it not being public comment, but again, that's something at the discretion of, of the mayor and the council to allow that so that you all have all the information. Um, the, the big issues, well, it's two small issues. Big issue is Resolution P and, um, I, I know all the council members and it, and over the years I've had different opportunities to talk to them, express concerns. So how I want to frame this is to say, I think that council member Lawler, uh, who we're in full, so that I have not talked to about this at all, really hit the nail on the head. Um, the council has to police itself. Um, and so there's no one outside of the voters, the elections that can police bad behavior. And what I, when I read the resolution, what I, what I really heard was basically there are bad actions taking place, but it doesn't identify who's doing that. And the justification is, is well, we'll, we'll, we'll bring healing by not, um, mentioning names or calling things out. And that really does it because the public does not know what you all are doing. Um, and that's the, the benefit and the burden of open meetings. Um, is that yes, it's hard to have hot conversations in open public, but we can make decisions based on that information. So the question is, uh, with what you all have done, is if a council member continues to violate code efforts, if they don't act in the public interest, if they don't disclose conflicts, if they don't respect independence of boards, if they don't remain, um, maintain a positive work environment, what, what use is the resolution if there is no teeth? I know Councilwoman, Councilmember Williams has said, you know, uh, he needs to have some teeth. And so the teeth is basically what is the council going to do if a member is violating that? And I know at the last meeting, one of the council members identified who that member was. Um, and so the question is, in my last couple of minutes here is, I think the.
Actually, you've been whispering. Oh, I'm sorry. You're right.
Can I have a second to that? Thank you. Um, the, the, the big issue is City Watch and we'll see what happens with that. Because that was a big issue, uh, that I had to deal with and contend with during my tenure. And what is the count, what is this going to do to keep the council from being harassed by misinformation? Thank you.
Hi, Elisa Reynolds, five one four East Michigan Avenue. I would like to state regarding the Huron Street, um, issue is that my husband works for the city. I work for Albion College. Neither one of us knew anything that Huron was going to be torn up or that the alleyway to our driveway was going to be blocked off or partially blocked up right now. We're not supposed to drive up. We still do. And the, the other residents on Huron Street that one also works for the college as well, didn't know anything that this was going to happen. They were actually even stopped. She stopped us on Friday and told us that the water department came over and said that they were going to shut their water off for several days. They had no knowledge that this was going to happen. They have nowhere to park. They can't get in and out of their driveway. Both her and I, as college employees, found out on Friday when Mr. Barkley sent out his email to the college staff stating what was happening. So, I mean, I can understand that the city council didn't really know what was happening as my husband is a city employee, had no idea as well. So it would be nice to be better informed as to what is happening with our roads, especially to the citizens that it will affect. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager Snyder, Clint Domingo, residents of the city of Albion, and folks watching this evening. Good evening. Gary Tapp, County Commissioner. Great to see you folks. Uh, this, everybody had a great Labor Day weekend. I had a wonderful time yesterday uh, walking the Albion River Trail and their annual Labor Day walk, which was really, really cool, ending up at Howland Park. A wonderful, uh, event there as well. So that was great to, uh, end the weekend and get things started on the, on the right case for the week. All right, a couple of things real quickly. Uh, in our last county commissioner meeting, we approved the town county health department's twenty-twenty-two fiscal year budget, uh, eight and a half, eight point eight million dollars, which is about a five point five percent increase from the previous year. However, the health department is very good and very well taken care of financially. So good, good news going forward. So there are no, no issues, no cutbacks, nothing's going to be taken away from them being able to provide the services that they need to provide. On the county broadband, high speed internet pass force front, uh, Michael Reen from Astronaut Wireless was on hand at our September first meeting as I talked about upcoming feasibility study, including the cost methodology, project goals, deliverers, deliverables, excuse me, and cost benefit analysis. Depending on the timing of when that study, when that cost feasibility study is completed, which is probably going to be spring of twenty-twenty-two, we would essentially, Calum County would be what they call shovel ready in terms of being able to, and, and that's very important for us because that essentially opens us up to the millions of dollars that'll be available down at the state level with the federal level. So as many of you know, the American study right now, that's earning a survey that's being conducted. If you hadn't had a chance to take that survey, please do so that we have as much information as we can in terms of so. But we have a very strong voice certainly on the east side of Calum County. As we've melded, high speed internet access in Calum County, especially the east side is very, 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 very small. So, um, just some updates. I'll keep you guys updated as we move on that. Uh, my newsletter. Uh, most of you do get that, but those of you that you've not, if you're interested in getting it, look at here. I even gave a. See that, folks? You see that? Tomkincc seven at gmail dot com. Absolutely. So if somebody has on YouTube, they can like, you know, freeze it and they can look at it, right? But anyway, it's a great resource to know what's going on. As you guys talk about transparency and openness, I'm a firm believer in transparency and openness. My newsletter is an opportunity for me to provide that so that you guys know what's going on at the county level, uh, without not only the east side of Calum County, but Calum County in general. So if you're interested, get on my email list. It's totally discreet. Nobody sees your email. It's a great resource. But one of the things that I talk about in this, this month's newsletter, and I know it doesn't necessarily reflect the city of Albion specifically, but in some cases, if I, I'll get to this point. Uh, under Act Fifty-One requirements, many of you know Act Fifty-One, and I talk about it about a hundred times a day, right? We were required by the state of Michigan, the county is, to report out what, uh, what revenue we receive for the year and what expenditures we actually expend for the year. And it's by township specifically. So obviously you guys are not part of that as related to the county. But what I want to point out is, is I've been saying, as I've been saying all along, the Act Fifty-One is not going to do what we need to do to get where we need to go. Uh, I'll give you a perfect example. There actually are two townships in, uh, in this past year that we had reporting our audit findings on. We had zero dollars spent in that township. Your neighbor to the north shared a township that two hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighteen cents spent last year. Now I can tell you, folks, whether that be good management of money or whatnot on the county level, but still what goes back to my point is that the current Act Fifty-One system and its dirt and its concept and how it's formed and how it works just simply doesn't do it. So what I also did is I took a nine-year average. So I could see every township over here to nine years, right? Give you one example, Takajah Township, very small rural township, just in the southwest of here. In nine years, had a total of ninety-two thousand dollars spent in nine years. That's about ten thousand dollars a year. So you can tell me right there that that never, ever, ever will get you where you need to go. Yes, sir.
Just to clarify, you're saying this is the funds that they spent on their roads through Act Fifty-One?
This would be the, this, exactly. This is road funding that we as a county would get. Now each township has a deliverable or they contribute through my, their miles of roads that they have and the population that's within that township. Very much similar to what you guys do on the municipality side of it. But essentially what happens is, and again, it goes back to that, and that's why I've always said we've got to get money down at the local levels. We've got to allow the townships to have money. They have nothing right now. The municipalities, you guys need more money to be able to do what you need to do. And basically, those of us at state and even the county governor need to take a step back and let you do your job. Let you get the things that you need done. And I think that's part of the roadblock that's been happening. Um, so that's just, but it's an excellent example. Again, you can take a look at it in my newsletter. It's an excellent example to see why things aren't working. We're seventy years into it and it doesn't work. I mean, take a look outside your door, you know, when I, when I hear, when I hear that pothole patching is our, is our plan to save our roads or let's return them to gravel, that's our plan. I think we have some problems, don't you think? We've really, really got to think better than that. So again, if you continue to see those, those, uh, those state legislators, keep talking to them. Keep asking them the questions. So what their plan is, at least ask them what their plan is. Because at this point in time, I haven't heard any of that. And you guys know your city streets, many of your city streets, especially your local city streets, there's a really not a lot of funding there to be had and it really suffers. So a lot of folks haven't had roads or streets taken care of in thirty, forty years potentially. And it goes the same way with the county as well and with some of the townships. All right, uh, just some more information. Also too, uh, at our recent Calum County Commissioner meeting, uh, Ms. DeJean, who's our chief medical examiner of Calum County, uh, was able to present our twenty-twenty annual report. And unfortunately, there's some very troubling or alarming numbers I want to share with you in that report for twenty-twenty. First and foremost, total deaths in Calum County were up seventeen percent to seventeen hundred eighty-three. Uh, that's up about two hundred and sixty-two deaths, a hundred and eighty-fourth attributed to COVID-related, just as an official number. Um, also two homicides quadrupled in twenty-twenty in Calum County. Quadrupled, which is a matter of concern for us. This one's really alarming for us as we all, you know, we talk about kids. Pediatric deaths, let's these be less than one-year-old children, went from zero in twenty nineteen to six in twenty-twenty, two of which were homicides. Just alarming numbers when we think about that. Drug-related deaths increased twenty-one percent and eighty-seven percent of those are opioid-related. So we still continue to, to have that struggle, you know? A lot of things happened with COVID and everything, you know, we were really hot on the opioid crisis. And then obviously other things happened and take it away is still a major issue. We really, really got to continue to deal with it. Now I will say, and then the issue with that is fifty-nine percent of those drug-related deaths left many, many minor children behind, which is another concern because that's another step in the process that we have to deal with. Those, many of those young children that, that no longer have a parent eventually going forward. So again, it's a very complex issue as being a co-chair of a substance abuse prevention coalition is high on my radar to make sure that we've got to find ways to be able to get that taken care of. Although I will tell you, there was one item that I will tell you that was a positive. If you could talk about positives within this, within this medical examiner report. Um, suicides were down thirty-one percent to its lowest level since two thousand and fourteen. So there's a positive to be had out of all of it, but still, uh, a lot of those numbers are troubling. Uh, as we're going, you know, COVID has created a whole different set of issues with us. And it's, and it's, and it's a multi-level layer situation that takes place. So again, I just want to share that with you. And then also too, many of you know the twenty-twenty census figures are out, at least preliminarily speaking and whatnot. Um, unfortunately, Albion, many of you might know this, Albion actually saw a ten percent decrease of about nine hundred and sixteen people in Calum County, uh, within, in, in the city of Albion. So your population's now at seven, seventy, seven hundred. That is actually the lowest, uh, that's the largest drop in population in the county, uh, in our census. So, you know, we, I know many of you worked very hard on the census to get people to fill out it, but that's such an important part because many of you know going forward, that number is going to be with Albion for the next ten years.
Does that include domicile within Albion College?
Point of order.
Sorry. It's okay. Totally understand. But, um, so again, that, that number essentially is, it, it carries with Albion. But, uh, we'll say that interesting enough, city of Battle Creek actually was up one point three four percent. And actually, the overall Calum County was down one point eight seven percent to a hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and ten. So that's where we stand today as a county going forward. And that number we get locked into for the next ten years. So, and then finally, if, if, as I said before, if it's none of you have taken, haven't taken that merit survey for the high speed internet, take three minutes to do it. It's a wonderful opportunity. We have a voice. And then I'm going to end on some positive notes, folks, because again, I kind of went positive and no points out. First and foremost, to Mayor Snyder, uh, absolutely, congratulations on your daughter's wedding. Looked like it was absolutely wonderful. So congratulations there. And then I'll end up with even a better one, where I'm not going to sing. I won't sing it to him. But certainly a very happy birthday to, uh, City Attorney Harpist, his birthday. So, see, how many county commissioners remember things like that, huh? They know those things, right? Exactly. So. Yeah. So we'll end it on a positive note again. As you guys always know, I'm totally open. If you guys need anything, give me a call, reach out to me. I'm always here to, to help any way I can. So. Unless there's any other questions, I will leave it alone. All right. You guys have a, you guys have a wonderful, all right. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Chris Johnson, five oh nine Land Street. Just wanted to let you, the council know, mayor, and all the city employees and workers that we're praying for you guys. Every week, my family and other members of our church get together and we lift you guys up in prayer. We even know that you are being led by the spirit, that your hearts will be untouched by heaven's spirit of unity. And so I want you to know that, our first responders to know that, that we care for you guys. We love you. We appreciate your hard work. So you're being prayed for.
Wait a minute.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to say that Gary Tappson did confirm that the Albion numbers were included domicile of Albion College. Just so you know, if you take away the college, then what is the actual population of the city? And since we don't want to consider the college as part of it.
City Manager, Bart. Yes, thank you, Mayor. Copy of my report was included in the packet. The first, second, third, bottom, and car wall street project, the minutes from the sixth progress meeting were attached. However, I would be even to seventh progress meeting after the packet was sent out, so I will send those out to everyone, so you have that. That project continues to move forward, and we are in the final stages of that solution, CCU streets being paved within that area. The USDA rural development application, if you often remember, we are working for to submit an application for upgrades to our wastewater treatment plant. That process, it is an extensive application and has taken some time, but we are in the final stages of getting ready to submit that application. City administration met with the city's Don Halsey Miller Kingfield on August 17th to discuss the proposed plan that will be issued for this project. So stay tuned, I will have more information coming within the next few weeks, because I know the engineer who's been working on that just sent emails this afternoon saying that he has all the information needed. And we are wrapping up with that process. So that's very exciting news, because I know our wastewater treatment plant, there are abundance of needs that need to be addressed immediately. Housing target market analysis, and that was from the city managers, that included city marshal of Battle Creek and city of Springfield on August 24th. We discussed housing needs within our community, and it is clear that there are needs in all communities here in Calum County. So we all agreed that we would like to partner and work together to update the 2016 countywide target market analysis that was last completed and was led by, by the county. So we are looking to update that study, so we have relevant current data to provide to developers. I'm looking to build some housing developments in Calum County. The Albion EDC industrial park master plan, we got our kickoff meeting on August 25th between the city, EDC, and Waterman Associates. Why then they will be working with us to develop a master plan for an EDC-owned property that's located at 1917 East Michigan Ave. Are formerly known as the 425 property, so out headed, my direction is on the city's weird piece, yes, heading east out of, out of town. So they will, the plan will assist the city and the EDC with marketing efforts to attract developers to this plan, to that property, I'm sorry. The plan will include parcels with three to four acres. There is estimated 8 to 12 parcels total, roadway locations, water main and sanitary sewer access, stormwater retention areas. And the plan will also include an assessment of available capacities of public water and sanitary sewers. We did receive the CDBG grant through the MEEC to assist with this development plan, so all costs are covered with grant funding. So we're excited to get that progress, or this process going. It shows our industrial park, we are reaching mass, passing our current industrial parks, so this is just a new expansion, and hopefully, we can attract some new development to our community. Austin Avenue parking, just wanted to follow up on discussion that took place at our last regular council meeting. M.D. has confirmed that the markings along Austin Avenue, they are not parking lanes, they are designated buck lanes. So cars should not be parking within these marked areas. I have informed public safety of that, we should not see cars being parked along that way. There are buckers for cars, buck lanes, so for the cars driving down the roadway to give it actual protection for people maybe walking along that roadway, but they are not parking lanes. So if you see anyone parking, please encourage, tell them they're not supposed to park there. I know we discussed putting up non-parking signs on roadway traffic control. Work order has to be completed through the state in order for a no parking roadway to be placed along that. Again, that is a state-owned roadway. Unfortunately, M.D. they do not have a current traffic engineer for our region, so the study will not be completed through M.D. until, however, Director Miller is working with another firm to see if they can assist us with getting that study completed, so we can get some more parking signs along that roadway to eliminate any confusion that any residents may have when traveling along that. Our sidewalk project, the citywide sidewalk replacement project, began the week of August 23rd. At the excavating, is leading that project, they have started in section two at Chauncey Albion Street. New curbs and dump downs have been four, where the old have been removed. Removal crew continues to remove ramps and curbs throughout section two, working there itself. Eventually to section four, I included a quadrant map of the city where it's broken into the project, so you can see the direction that project is taking, whole person you were. And then diversity equity inclusion training, just in accordance with Resolution 2020 S 36, a resolution to declare racism as a public health crisis in the city of Albion. Made the process of seeking estimates for diversity equity inclusion training for council-owned and city staff in accordance with our purchase policies, if anything is over $2,000 to the required ticket free quote. These trainings are well over that. Thank you, Councilmember Lenu, for providing me with one proposal. So I would just see, I need one additional, so that we are in accordance with our purchase policy, and I will be bringing for a formal recommendation at our next meeting. Any questions, first city manager?
Yes, absolutely. On Saturdays, on Sunday, September 19th, I would have the park, we have the dedication of the pavilion and the naming of the pavilion. It's going to be named after Dr. Harry Donner. And so his family is going to be in town for the- Was that a question for a city manager? Is that a question for the city manager? Oh, no, I didn't know if you asked for a question, please.
Yeah.
Yes, councilwoman, I can wait.
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. I, I just wanted to make sure council may want to send off a video training from the K-Cow. So I just wanted to make sure we have that connection.
I'm going to do that.
Any other questions, first city manager? On Sundays, on Sunday, September 19th, at 3 o'clock, at Howland Park, we're going to have the dedication of the new pavilion and the naming of it, it's going to be the Harry J. Donner Pavilion. And so we're asking people to come out and enjoy with us and bring your picnic lunch, because we're going to have a little picnic there afterwards, but we are not buying food, so grab your lunch, come on out. With that occasion, you can have lunch at the pavilion with Harry. His family will be in town for the festival, so who knows, that would be a good time. We have fireworks Saturday, Sunday, September 19th. Any other council comments? Yes, I was in luck.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just wanted to say to, to my precinct, so that I can self-correct my own self, since, you know, nobody wants to start up and do it. Things that I have been doing, I probably won't be able to do anymore. As far as to uncover the drains, whenever it's a bad- or whatever, because as I said before, I would be dipping into city operation business. I won't be able to report your trees if you need assistance with them anymore. Your street sweeper, your potholes, or even if you need patching. I will try my best to get the number that you have to call first, and then let me know when you record it, since we do a dance by protocol. So I'm trying to self-check my own stuff when doing these things. These are things that I just usually take to complain, and I usually go out there myself and, and try to help city workers with some things that they may be struggling with, or don't have enough staff to deal with. I would have never thought that I would be violating anything just to help, but just to keep things in line and keep it lined up, it, it's just pathology. I never knew that I was breaking anything. So I just want my precinct to know that some of these things I have been doing and I haven't actively been doing, it probably won't be done anymore. So I'm just thinking that the best that I can do for you is to provide you with a number that you can call. So I'll try to send something out here in the near future to make sure that we follow those interests. So I have to ask if I can have privilege?
Sure, yeah.
Officially, I'm busy one as of tonight, I moved all through the weekend, I'm no longer living at Houston Austin. Although I still own the house, it'll be big for a few months, got some things I need to get here. And I want to say thank you for voting for me, for providing that here. And I learned a lot during this, this short tenure, tenure. Sleeping, I'm so sleepy. But I would like to make a couple of suggestions, and from the meeting tonight, just listening to, I don't know her name, but listened to her when she says she didn't know about the, what was going on in the streets and stuff. Maybe we need to look at looking, using our city newsletter, more with some of the bullet points from, you know, the meeting. So people will have that information, you know? And then it'll be in writing, because it might, it might, we might be planning it now, but it might not happen until next year. So maybe that might be something that could help out with later, to, you know, when, when things are going on in your street, you no longer can go down the street. Also, the grocery store that I was trying to get in this area, the gentleman that I've been contacting, contacting, and the people that he's been contacting, is very much interested. Please don't let that die. This is a, this is a matter of doing things quickly and not taking your time about it. Because if, if it's not moved above, we're going to lose opportunity. So please make sure that's taken care of. And I just want to say my taxes are paid. As I move on to another, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman, for your service to our community. It is appreciated. Any other comments? Yes, Councilwoman, let me-
I, I ran, or I was speaking with Attorney Harpless before the meeting, and I knew I had a question, and now it's coming to me. I was wondering if it is possible to move our next council meeting date from the 20th to the 21st? And I didn't know what that requires to, to actually move the date of the meeting. Dr. Ibram Kendi will be in Albion that evening on Monday, September 20th. And there's an opportunity related to our priority of addressing racism as a public health crisis to interact with a nationally, internationally renowned scholar related to anti-racism. So I just wanted to offer that, it's not an expectation, it's just an opportunity for, for us to be able to interact with him in, in a normal capacity here in Albion.
So we have planning permission that, that evening, oh, that Tuesday evening.
So are there, are there any other options for other times, or I don't know what the formal rate of change thing is?
Well, the meetings are adopted on a schedule by resolution annually, so hypothetically, your council will have to vote to amend its schedule.
Okay, so we, so it was too late to do it for this meeting, because you can't vote.
You won't, I mean, I guess you'd have to have a special meeting before the next meeting to do it.
Okay, no, that's why.
Any other council comments? Everybody was here, so we don't need to excuse, motion to adjourn.
So move, support.
Council on the Park.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Daxson.
Yes.
The mayor.
Yeah.
Ryan.
Yes.
And Eric.
Yes. We adjourned at 5:00 PM.